Okay, we'll call our regular meeting Belmont Clemente, Clemente Community School District, Board of Directors for this 19th day of December. The time is 7:02. We're gonna begin with a call to order and a roll call.
Gary Berklin.
Here.
Ryan Meyer. Joel Boozman.
Here.
Rick McDaniel.
Here.
Michelle Murphy.
Here.
Kevin Ring.
There.
James Swetson.
Here.
We have a quorum. We'll begin with the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I welcome all of the visitors tonight. All of the visitors, happy to have you here. You look like you're anxious to be here. Happy, joyful, whatever. We're glad you're here. It's a nice snowy night in Iowa. We're all thinking Christmas thoughts and sugar plums. But in any event, I would like to welcome you. Any communications from the community? Anything in writing? If so, if not, then we'll move on and I need a motion to approve or amend the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second, Rick. Any additions? None? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion carried. Next named emotion for the consent agenda. I need a motion. Put that over, read a motion. James? Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Joel? Any comments about any of the items on the consent agenda? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion is carried. We'll note that Mr. Meyer, our vice president, just arrived. So he's now part of the meeting. So it's in the record.
There should be a fine.
There is a fine. He's gotta eat two of Mike White's cookies and two of our candies.
What a bummer.
The fine should be he only gets two of these.
No, 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 I'm trying to ruin his diet. There you go, buddy. Okay. We'll be gone, we're ready for a report. The first report is from the beamers in the corner of the room. Come on, let's hear it.
Where do you guys want me to stand?
Wherever we can see you.
Alright, I brought a gang with me today.
I see, that's good.
Okay, I have a like five slide presentation, I hope we can manage that.
You're right in the middle of it.
You're fine.
Now you're, now you can sit down.
Make Tavion stand the whole thing.
Please sit over there.
Okay, um, so my name is Austin Lich and I am the current designated esports coordinator and head coach here for our esports program at Belmont Clemente. Our program extends from seventh grade all the way through seniors and I, unless I was mistaken, I think this is the first time I've spoken to you guys.
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm excited but also very nervous, so please bear with me. I talk in front of children all day and.
This isn't much different.
Weight off my shoulders.
Just don't listen to us yet.
Wanna make a bet on that?
You have my son, you know that.
Um, but I wanna also go ahead and let these guys introduce themselves. These are just some members from my esports teams, current and past. I've got some alumni here with us today, so we'll go ahead and start with Adam.
Hi, I'm Ally Schwind and I'm currently a freshman.
My name is Davin Dale Watts, I'm currently a junior.
I'm Jose O'Farrell and I am a senior.
I'm Braden Vanuol, I graduated last year, I'm a freshman in college.
I'm Almiller, graduated last year and a freshman in college.
Okay, so these guys, I invited them to be here because I think they are amazing examples. I have, we have amazing examples in all of our program, but these guys were just gullible enough to come and be kind of thrown to the wolves. So, which I really appreciate and they won't hold it against you too much. So just a little bit about our program. I hold these guys and gals to a pretty high standard. We, we achieve for academic excellence first, so that way we can achieve in the program that we are competing in. Currently, I think as of yesterday, I'm wearing this jersey, I'm one of the seven executive members that run the organization for the state. There's seven of us that essentially we meet every month, sometimes when we get closer to state playoffs, we meet a little bit more often, but we talk about things that we need for, for, for the coaches that are out there, the schools that are out there, things that we need to improve upon, game manuals, et cetera, et cetera. There's a lot of things that we discuss. This is my first year doing this and a bit awkward than I can chew a little bit, but I'm doing, I'm trying my best here, alright? To represent Belmont Clemente as best I can. But with that comes a level of excellence that we strive to achieve. I personally think that our team is an amazing team, right? Not just in skill, but in sportsmanship, teamwork and how we compete, alright? So sportsmanship is one of our tenants. Anywhere we go, these guys, these guys, they know that I wanna be the most sportsmanlike team wherever we go. Esports is predominantly done online, but the reason I have to put in sportsmanship, we don't really see the teams face to face, but we're pretty darn good. So we make it to the in-person playoffs quite often. So we do have to have that as one of our tenants and I've never had an issue when we've gone somewhere with our teams not being sportsmanlike. It's actually kind of interesting because since I became one of the exec members, one of the other coaches that's at the, at an exec also was like, do you need someone to like watch your kids while you're doing this? And I was like, I've got enough parents to like manage them, but ultimately they're autonomous, they'll take care of themselves. And I, my two years of coaching and, well, my four years of coaching, two years of being a deck, I've never had an issue with sportsmanlike issues in that regard. Teamwork is another one that we are dedicated to. The current season right now is our Overwatch season and, well, four of the people up here have been on my teams, three in the Bronco jerseys are on the team. Teamwork's a big part of that game, isn't it? Huge part of that games and it's, it's a big part of anything that we do. And so we are dedicated to teaching these kids how to work as a single unit to achieve the goal. So that's something that we strive really, really hard for. Sometimes I raise my voice, but they forgive me pretty often and that's okay. I said pretty often, pretty often. Right, what was that, what was that you were gonna say over there? Even when we're winning, I'm yelling, right? Okay. Our last thing here before I go to the next slide is competition. That is an image of us at in-person state playoffs. I'm not sure you can really tell in that image, but I believe we are shaking hands with the enemy team, enemy team, the opposing team before we get started or maybe it's afterwards. But we are one of the top schools in the Iowa High School Esports Association out of 152 as of yesterday. Little Belmont Clemente going against Ames, Des Moines schools. We are beating them and we have less kids to pull from. I remember talking to one of the Des Moines coaches and he's like, he's like, I had to do tryouts and I had to narrow my 85 kids that tried out to 10. We had what, seven show up to tryouts, eight for Overwatch? We had eight show up to tryouts and I had, or tryouts and I had to pick the top five as our starters. And we are consecutively beating these much larger schools. So competition is something that, sportsmanship, teamwork, competition, that all goes hand in hand for our major three tenants there. So our current winter season is Overwatch. This is, I would, I would argue this is one of our most competitive titles as of right now. When, when we had a large pool of coaches, when Trish Morris was helping us out and when Leo Livingston was still here helping us out, we had a, we were able to cast a wide net and be hyper competitive in a lot more titles. I'm just one guy, so I like to hyper focus on a couple of things instead of massive things. But I think that banner on the wall over there speaks for itself that Leo Livingston helped lead this team too. We were state champions in 2022. The state champs, number one team in the state. And we don't get that without these things here, without these kids here, alright? Without you guys helping us. But right now Overwatch is one of our most hyper competitive seasons and the amount of teams that compete with us are just getting bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger. I think the first year we played Overwatch, there was like 28 teams. Not, not a whole lot of competition there, we made it to eighth place. The second year we did it, there was 56 teams. The third year we did it, there was I think 70 some and then this year there's 152 schools playing Overwatch. Alright, in some capacity, alright? So down at the bottom, 2022, we got eighth place, 2023, Tavian likes to say we didn't compete 2023, but we got 12th place, which technically, technically we were tied with like five other schools, but I'd like to say for 12th.
You like to say it too, huh?
I do like to say it too. But, and then last year we got fourth place, which is pretty good, alright? This year is still to be determined, but I will say the varsity is 2-0 right now. Flawless sweeps, they didn't even take a single point off us. That's like the equivalent of playing in a basketball game and the opposing team doesn't score the entire time we play. Two games back to back. So we're doing pretty well this season and we're looking forward, we've got five more games coming after Christmas break and they're constantly changing the game, so that's something that the kids have to adapt to and I have to adapt to as well. Now I'm gonna give these guys just like a little bit, a little bit of time here, okay? This is the part that they've been waiting for nervously. But Ally, Tavian and Jose, I'm gonna have them go first. They're going to kind of explain their experiences and their participation with the esports program here at Belmont Clemente.
So as I said, I'm Ally. I've been in esports for three years and I am in all three titles. I play for our fall season Smash Bros. Currently, since it's the winter, I manage, which means I have to basically take care of all of our arena, make sure everyone has their headsets and gear, jerseys that come up and write numerical order. And I basically learn everything while I'm just standing watching. I know a ton of game knowledge and I'm still constantly learning, but I'd say I can understand it pretty well.
Alright, my name is Tavindale Watts. I've been a part of this program too long, I've known this guy too long. In my time here, I've been on the Overwatch varsity team for four years. I just joined the Smash team this year and made varsity with a permanent starting spot. I've been on the R6 varsity every year that we've done it and, sorry. I really don't know what to say, you just kind of threw me up here, but I'll say that being part of this program has tremendously helped me learn a ton of like teamwork, communication skills that would be harder to learn anywhere else in any other activity I do because, because of the sheer amount of concentration, words.
Overwhelming information being thrown at me.
Yeah, all the information being thrown at me. It's a ton of stuff to take in and comprehend at once, but it's helped me do that here and take that skill into other places in my life. Like, you know, I work at Fairway and there's a lot of stuff that can be thrown at you at once. You know, you have a person down, things start messing up, all the technology's going wrong. This, being here has helped me keep my cool in those situations and having that run successfully. So it's, it's helped me learn things that I need other lot, other places. I say we move on, that was a no.
As you know, I'm a senior for our team, well, anders too.
Anders too.
But I've only been in this program for two years. I'm probably the least here for experience, but being in these two years have really shown me how the exact same it is for like football or basketball. People are constantly nagging at each other and telling them what to do and what not to do. And the focus that everybody has is pretty much the exact same, pretty much. But for these two years, it's been helping me bond with other people that I never think I would bond with before in my life.
These last two gentlemen that I have going here, Braden Vanuol and Colin Milberger, they are alumni and as they said, they graduated last year. And these guys both went on to continue their esports careers at the collegiate level, so I'll let them talk about that first.
Hey, my name is Braden Vanuol, correct me if I'm some of you, I was here last year and talked in front of you about esports. So yeah, I graduated last year, I played on the state championship team along with Colin. Moved here for esports my junior year, played five seasons, starting with Siege the first semester I was here. From there, played all my senior year, was team captain for our Valorant team, first year we got it. Took them to state, got fourth? So, and that, that was kind of why I'm curious, I wanted to play Valorant, they didn't have it. Since then, I've gone into college, I go to Clark, which is in Dubuque, I'm a scholarship there. I play Valorant for their varsity roster, I'm probably their second best in their roster. They are, as of last semester, a top 16 team in the northern region of America. We have one top 3,000 player in the world. So, and honestly, I wouldn't be going to college if I hadn't moved here and started esports. There, there's so many connections that I've made through this program, our affiliates through Iowa Esports Association. And I mean, that's where it really hooked me up with Clark and helped me get a scholarship there. And the, the connections, the relationships I built here have really helped me grow. They, they kind of got me out of a, a dark spot in my, in my life, so I'm really glad that I can move schools and, you know, come here, help win a championship, make friends, get acclimated in here, it's, it's a really good program. It's probably one of the best ones I've ever seen.
I'm Colin Milberger, I'm currently a freshman at Marshall County Community College. I started my career as a sophomore for the University of Siege program and we finished second that season. I would later also play Smite, led by Coach Morris or whatever, Oras are like they call them all. Which one thing I love, which I'll mention it now, I'm quote unquote her nephew, as we like to have in our program, like we have a lot of inside jokes, so it's all good. And then like Braden said, I was also part of that state championship winning team, that was coached by Leo Livingston. And then I was also a part of the Siege program in my senior year as well, we took up the fourth. And just recently, we actually, our MCC roster won our Division III national championship in the NJC A1, which is our, our first Siege championship for the program. Which honestly, I wouldn't, I'm in the same boat as Braden, I'm one of, think, I'd have thought of going to college if it wasn't for esports. As my freshman year, my grades were very low and I was not gonna pass. But I made it through it and then I heard of esports during COVID, I looked into it. Sophomore year, went to tryouts, was an immediate starting varsity member. Which one thing really captivated, captivated to me was the team aspect and how esports is really kind of a place that, for those that really don't have another place to go, be part of, like we have a very diverse range of players and former players and we've got a lot of awesome coaches who really guide the program and former, can't forget that. So I think that really, the ability to be in, you know, some like esports at this level, because five years ago, we probably, you know, yes, we're just starting out, but we only had eight schools. We were one of the first eight schools in the entire state, you know, like, which says it's over 150 and growing too, which I think is also great for those that want to go to college, we don't have the financial support. As I was scout out very early after winning that state championship. So I think that the ability that we can go to college, the way to play video games is a very fun thing. And the parents too also get really supportive behind, like my mom would say before I joined esports, stop playing video games all the dang time and actually tell me to, oh, get down there and practice. So I think it's really great, which also, my brother also competed in collegiate esports at Washington Artech, which was also a starting program that season. So honestly, I really think it's been a fantastic journey and a lot of people, I've met a lot of people that I would have never met before. Yeah, really, I wanna see, there's nothing more to say, it's just fantastic.
So lastly, does anyone have any questions? We, we will have your answers if you have any questions.
I'm from the Duck Hunt Nintendo generation, are these just computer games or are they coming out of like an Xbox or Playstation or what?
There's, there's some times that you can play on consoles. We have like Super Smash Bros., that's for the Nintendo Switch, Mario Kart's for the Nintendo Switch. They have a loud Rocket League to be played on like Xbox and Playstation. Valorant now is on console, like Xbox and Playstation, but before it was just a computer only title. But when we do go to state, we compete solely on PC. Actually, we, we've made it a new rule this year that you can't bring your own consoles with you. So like last year, we had someone for the Valorant playoff, or not Valorant, for Overwatch playoffs bring a Playstation 5 with them. And some teams were starting to speculate that, oh, that person could have modded it and brought it in. You know, so to keep everything level and fair, we have sponsors like Bloom and Bitespeed that bring in, or MechDyne also, that bring in computers for us that are completely unbiased to keep a level playing field.
So y'all have computers at home that you, you play these on?
Yes.
Yeah, I built my house.
I built my own. Brag about it.
I probably wouldn't if I didn't.
I will, I will bring up Duck Hunt to the, to the league. I will bring it up.
It's pretty fun.
Yeah, yeah. We bowl them.
Yes.
You mentioned 150 other teams. You competed against all of them or is the state broke up into conferences for this?
Yeah, we are broken up, we're broken up into classes and divisions. So we have like division, I think here, let me pull up the, hold on. We have a new website here called Ledia OS, it's not a new website, but it's something that's new to us. And we are using it to kind of track everything here. So if I go ahead and I click on winter Overwatch varsity, we have all these different classes and each class has, like I'll go ahead and I'll click on ours here. Here's our schedule, it's got all these games that are being played in a single season.
Jeez, so we're class one, division three?
Class one, division three for Overwatch, yep.
For just Overwatch?
This is just Overwatch.
Okay.
But then it, cause then it switches depending on how many other schools are in. Cause like Osage is one of the schools that we go up against quite a bit, but let's say Osage doesn't do Valorant. And so we go in there and none of our class one, division three buddies play Valorant, but we got nobody to compete against, so they have to mix stuff up a little bit, right? So it's not like, it, it differs in that sense also from like other activities because like football, almost every school's got a football team. Not every school's got an esports team and not every esports team has a Valorant team, has a Siege team, has a Rocket League team, you know?
Are team, are, or I mean, are teams based on like school size or just like kind of?
They, they tried doing it by proximity, like who's close to who, so we'd always go up against like Garner and Eagle Grove and things like that. But then we were like, hey, we're doing it all online, what's the point of proximity? You know, and so about two years ago, we made the switch to, I'm not entirely, I'm still learning how we, the algorithm, on how we differ at all.
And what's that community called that you're on?
The Iowa High School Esports Association, IAH.
And were you selected?
I was voted in, yeah, by the other designated esports coordinators, yeah, in the summer, I was voted in.
I don't know that you need help. You couldn't really know without anybody's help. But I, what I wanna know is, is there things that the school district could do for you that make you a better esports team?
A better esports team?
Yes.
One of like the biggest, I, I put in here quotes around complaints that, that we have is just, we're in such a tight spot, like tight space, we're crammed over in this corner here and it served its purpose, but you, if you were at the Overwatch JV game today, Ally, you were there, we had all of our team plus some spectators crammed over here. We had people who weren't in competing at the time getting warmed up for when they'd get rotated in. And then it was just, we had almost all of the computers running and then we still didn't have enough room for all of our people. We had some people sitting out here at tables because there wasn't room for them and so we, we were just kind of running out of space.
So space is the issue?
A little bit, yeah.
And we could have bleachers and everything watching you.
I've got parents that come in here and I've gotta push them back because they wanna stand right over their kid's shoulder.
Yeah, right.
You know? Which is a great problem to have.
Yeah, how does one spectate this?
So what we usually do is, what I'll have is I'll have all of the guys that are competing stream, there's, they can stream their screens on Discord, right? I know, I know, a lot of, a lot of words. Alright, they can stream their screens on Discord and what I do is I put them up here on the board and then I just kind of set up rows in here for the audience to watch. And then people come in and sit down and it's happening live over here on the screen while they're competing over there on their own.
So typically put usernames of each person and who they are right by their screen, so specific parents know exactly who they're watching?
I came once last year, I think it was Valorant maybe, but I'd bring my 10-year-old to tell me what the heck was going on. That was intense though, holy cow, you're running. The pace of the game and the amount of communication and teamwork involved just blew me away. I was just really impressed.
Lot of talking, lot of talking. There's a lot of yelling, but the coaches.
I will say one thing, if you do come to watch and you don't know what's going on, find one of the team members that are here that aren't playing at the time, ask them if you're here to watch a specific person. They'll let you know what screen to watch up here and if you need some pointers of what's going on, they'll be more than happy to explain it to you as it's going on. So they're really good at explaining that stuff. I will say it does get tight in here very much.
A little bit, it does get a little bit tight in here.
My mother's been to plenty of esports state conferences, I think she can, she's explaining the games to other parents, she's like, oh, I get it now.
Yep, yep.
When you two gentlemen got to the college level, is there anything that you could share from that that would help us here at the high school level? Things that you didn't expect to see or things that you wish you could have had here?
I think the biggest thing for me is, cause I mean, we go to different colleges. Is it more of a college that they, they fully back their, their esports program, they have their own separate room?
Yeah, we have like an entire, we have two rooms, we have a main lab for computers. I think we have about, I think it's about 25 or 30 PCs. We have like bleachers, we have a lot of TV screens, cause also there's an esports program in the major you can do at MCC. So our head coach, Nate Yormeyer, teaches that class, so it's also kind of a study space. And we have a console room which has TVs around every wall, about, I think about four or five, maybe a bit more, so you can have multiple games run at once. One thing that I definitely think that the high school can benefit from is having multiple coaches for each game. Like I kind of did a bit of assistant coaching for the Siege program since Lich's forte is mainly Overwatch and Smash Bros. So I definitely think that having individual coaches is better for the program as a whole as it gives, you know, it shows that, say, if we have a lot of multiple coaches for say Overwatch or Valorant, if you play Valorant, you feel like you, you and your coach have a closer connection because you can more understand like specifics of the game. No, no shame in that.
You're trying to take my job over there?
No.
He's gonna graduate college someday.
Well, I think that having individual coaches helps make the team as a whole tighter as they can really have more focused practices, as every title at MCC has an individual coach and the head coach is kind of sophisticated, everything, make sure the events go right. As they're also the official broadcasting partner for the fall finals every, every season, so. Definitely having individual coaches and I think also having extra space as currently the console teams go into Lich's room per game day, which can get pretty, pretty full and pretty fast, so. And definitely having a lot of, definitely having multiple coaches.
Yeah, and then that's, that's completely different from, from my program. So my program, we kind of have the same situation that we have here where there's, there's room and the room works for what it needs to work for, but aside from that, there's like no room for, for expansion. So our current facility at Clark, we do, we have three different like groups of computers we've got. They're all old and new and we, being a private four-year and a town with two other private four-years kind of fight for, for enrollment, so not doing too hot in terms of funding. They cut, they cut funding across the board for all athletics by 15%. But we are currently shunned in what was a lounge room, like pool room in our student activity center. So it's with all the other athletics. It's this kind of oddly shaped, rounded room. There's glass windows all on the outside and we have our PCs lining like those windows. And I think we have 13 or 14 PCs in there currently and we have, there's absolutely no room for, for growth right now. And we are a smaller program, but we are a nationwide breakfast program. Like I said, we're a top 16 in, in the northern region. And I, I think the biggest thing is despite all of that, we just don't feel supported by, by the college itself. So the biggest thing that you guys can do and that schools in general can do is just whether or not it's actually showing up or just showing somehow, just, just be supportive of the program.
Putting the name of esports out in the spotlight is good because when this program started, it was really, it was like, oh, it's just the gamers, the gamer club. Which that's what a lot of people perceived it as. But once they realize that, hey, these are teams and players that are contending for state championships and colleges are looking at them, that's like, like having a really good football program. Yes, you know, like it's different because, you know, people, everybody knows football, but nobody really knows what esports is. So like the more you get it out there and the more you introduce people to it. Like when we were here still, I'd have teachers ask me, hey, how was the esports match? Or, you know, they'd come in and watch our matches and they'd kind of get the basics of the game. Because like even if you don't have a direct understanding of everything in the game, just knowing that it's your school, it's your students, it's helping boost their grades up, they're having better social life, better social life and really learning a lot of life skills. It really, it can really draw the appeal of esports because a lot of people don't do anything else other than esports. Like I definitely didn't do much outside of like fine arts. That allows me, doing nothing my freshman year. But once esports, you know, I got into esports, I started doing other things, having better social life, having better grades. And once, you know, once we won the state championship and as well as, you know, being like second, fourth, top eight, it really starts to show that, hey, this school's really good at esports, but people are not knowing about it. But honestly, it's really good, especially when you see the independent, you see esports on the front page. I think really getting esports out there is sort of like the key thing to getting a lot more support, allowing us to get more computers and new jerseys or whatever we need.
I think it's really important to hear you guys say how it's helped in other parts of your life, at Fairway or whatever parts of your life, and the communication piece. Because I think it is easy for people to have the misconception that you sit in here behind a computer and you don't talk to each other. The communication piece is huge because that is a misconception that you don't communicate. And I think that's a great life skill that you're learning. The teamwork, the sportsmanship, that's all a huge life skill. So I'm glad to hear you say that because I think that helps get rid of some of that belief that people have. And so once they, I think the, the more they learn about it, the more they will understand that it is a huge part of, of life here at the school that is helpful for a lot of students.
Any other questions or comments? If not, Austin, thank you so much for having us and have a chance to hear these really, really awesome people and how proud they have been of being state champs and continue to be awesome even beyond high school, but still competing really well right now. So I remember awarding somebody, well, one of you here, when I awarded you the cup, the championship.
I was a Harry.
You remember that, that was so cool. And I thought, people ought to be just going crazy. How many state championships have we won in other sports here?
Yeah, literally the day of, we won the state JV. We were, people were really using class time to watch our streams. Like I would go into classrooms, they would have our names on it. Which had the title is, what was it, Sesame Street we had? So it was always Sesame Street characters playing the game and had like, oh, me as Bert, which I still keep that name because it's a funny name. Everybody does Harry, but nobody knows Bert. So we have had our names and then our usernames. Literally had almost every single class watching our stream. And they didn't probably even really know what was going on, but you know, they showed the support. They, you know, literally we went on the pages announcing that we were state champions. So it's a really good feeling.
I do want to say that pretty much every single time we've ever gone to state for a competition, a plethora of teachers are putting the stream up in their rooms supporting us. And I'll be, I'll be there and I'll be getting messages from friends saying, good job and stuff like that.
And they also like bossing us for every single state tournament too.
And then, yeah, sometimes a lot of people drive, drive themselves like two hours all the way to Marshalltown just to watch us in person, like this guy did for Smash, did it?
He had a college visit, but he was.
So did Andrew.
I'm always open to talk about esports. Like I love my job, I love this part of my job. I love teaching to Ms. Jensen, but I love, I love, I love coaching. Getting to work with these guys has been one of the greatest parts of my life. It's been so fun. And it's just been really rewarding and really fulfilling to get to know these people, get to watch them grow, get to watch them learn and thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank all of you. You guys have done an awesome job.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Now you guys can run away.
I'll try to follow that. You're up, Justin.
Now Justin's going to make his point.
He's going to do the exciting stuff.
Oh, pretty good. I tried to trade Ali at the beginning and she would do it. I don't know if I do either, Ali, in all fairness. I'm going to, I'm going to get these kids out of here.
See you, thank you for coming.
Thank you guys.
So I was just going to come here. Our elementary instructional coach, Amy and I kind of came up with this field. Unfortunately, she lives in Brit and so we're getting that covered. So that's why she's not here tonight. But I don't know if I'm necessarily speaking on her behalf, but we came up with a lot of this stuff together. This is where we're at currently in terms of professional development here at PK. Some things that TLC is working on. Really our big initiative going forward this year is taking some stuff that we've already done with the clarity process and we're trying to align what we're doing as a district K through 12. That essentially what we're trying to do through all of this is, I don't know, I'm going to take math for example. Math just came out with brand new standards this year. And the problem, the issue with standards, standards are great and they're a great place for you to start as a teacher. The only issue is, and research has backed this up, that is that it is impossible to guarantee that every single student master every single standard that's written in the Iowa court. It is possible to teach every standard, but there's a difference between I taught it for a day and students actually learned and mastered. Like those are two very, very different things. So what we are trying to do in each of our individual classes is take the standards that we have as a collaborative group, like the English department's doing this together, is taking the standards that the English department has and say, okay, at the 712 level, we've done this. What are the essential standards that we have? Or like the math department right here, these blue standards or these yellow standards? Are, okay, the standards that we have, what are the essential standards that we say are so important that we actually, we don't want to just teach these standards? We want to ensure that students have mastered those. So like for some students, I might have to teach this over multiple days. Or I might have at one point in time where half of my class has the standard mastered, the other half doesn't. So I'm going to extend this half that has this mastered. I'm then going to do some remediation with this class because we want to ensure that when they move on to the next grade level, they don't have any sort of holes. Like for example, we're coming up with some of this in math where we started with algebra two and kind of said, okay, in algebra two, one of the standards that we have is they need to extend the property of exponents to rational exponents. How do they need to do that? They need to apply the rules of exponents to rational numbers. Do I know what that means? I don't, but our math department does, so you can have a debate on that. I was just going to say, we started with algebra two and the reason why we started with algebra two is because that is the last quote unquote required math class that we want students to take after that. They might get into tech math, they might take some upper level math class, that sort of thing. But this is one where we want like all of our students want to be at algebra two. That's kind of where the standards are. So then we took that and it's like, okay, if this is where they need to be in algebra two, they should already know the rules of exponents here. So now we can go back and say, okay, if I'm teaching algebra one, somewhere in our standards or somewhere where I'm teaching, I need to then prioritize rules of exponents because if, if Joey is in algebra two and the first time that they see rules of exponents is in algebra two, I'm now having as a teacher to chase my tail because they don't have the groundwork already. And then we're going backwards and doing that for algebra one, so on and so forth. That eventually, like the big picture vision of this would be is that we essentially have like a guaranteed viable math curriculum where we can say at each grade level, all the way from algebra two, all the way down to kindergarten, here's exactly when students are in my class. Here as a teacher, I am promising that I am going to prioritize these things. We're going to ensure that not just that we taught it, but that students have actually learned and mastered these particular things so they're ready for second grade, so they're ready for third grade, so on and so forth. And if we can do that as a district, then that's how you end up ensuring that you don't have holes. Where all of a sudden they get to pre-algebra and it's like, these students don't understand. I don't even know the best way to say all of that. I don't know, like still solving one-step equations. Maybe they need to master that in sixth grade. Then they get to seventh grade, they need to make sure that they have that because then in seventh grade, they move to two variable equations, which I don't think that that's the case. But anyways, we understand kind of the gist of what I'm going with there. English has done the same thing. We even did this with CTE. CTE was in a group that we did this with. And what we did in the CTE group is they decided what they wanted to look at was employability skills. And essentially there's certain employability skills that we want students to have. So CTE teachers are really going to dig into those and be like, okay, what is the progression of employability skills that we have? So for example, communicating and working productively with others. This is the start of this. We said, okay, in seventh and eighth grade, here's some specific things that we want students to be able to do within this ninth and 10th, 11th and 12th. And then through their content, the teachers would then embed this into the content that they have. So we're actually explicitly teaching some of these things as well. Is really what that is. And again, what we're trying to do is get aligned so that we have certain things that we are saying are essential. Like I guarantee, I am going to do everything in my power as a teacher, not just to teach this, but to ensure that my students have learned it because we're talking about those are definitely two different things. Because there are some things that, and there are certain standards where it's like, if you look at the standards, there are certain standards where it's like, okay, that's a nice to know. There's other standards that are definitely need to know because they either need it for the next grade level, they need it because it's going to be on ISAS more so than others. Or like just in real life, these are things that students absolutely, we need to make sure that our students to be productive citizens. We need to make sure that they can communicate more productively with others. We need to start like explicitly teaching leadership integrity and ethical behaviors. We need to ensure that they demonstrate personal initiative. And those are all things that are found within the standards. But if you don't take time to look at those standards and really prioritize them as a teacher, it can be a little bit overwhelming just because there's so much in the standards. Have we struggled with this articulation process in the past? Yeah, I would say like just increasing collaboration. Like we've done so much here recently to increase collaboration and to talk to one another that now it's a point where it's like, that, that happens a lot of times where it's teacher X says, well, I know that they were taught this in seventh grade. How come when they get to me in ninth grade, they don't remember it? Well, part of it might be like they were taught it, but did we necessarily ensure that they have learned it? Because if you don't do this process as a teacher, it's really, really difficult because you feel as if I need to, like when we had textbooks, the whole idea like a math teacher was I need to start on page number one and by the end of the year, I need to get to page 999. Therefore, this day I need like take, take number of pages, take divided by number of days. Every day I need to get through X number of pages. But in reality, that's covering everything, but we're not necessarily ensuring mastery in a lot of those regards.
You could go through the whole book and not learn anything.
You could, for sure.
And that's part of the problem.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's not to say, that's not to say that we're just saying we're not going to teach certain things. That's not necessarily true. What we are really doing is saying we are going to prioritize that which is essential. Because those are two different things. Like as a teacher, I might have a lesson that, that I want students to have exposure to, that I might teach that in a day. And just for example, like if Will doesn't get that non-essential thing in a day, I taught it, I covered it, but I'm not going to spend my valuable time then going back and ensuring that he has that. However, if it is priority, I'm going to try to ensure that every single one of my kids has that skill that we, because those are just two different things. This is where we're at there.
Teachers have been working really, really hard on this.
Yeah. I, I think, my sense is that we have been missing the gold in some years past. And I'm glad to hear that we're really trying to get focused on specific things that our kids, we can guarantee, almost guarantee those kids know that when they leave that class. Yeah, and then it's the whole thing of like, we're building systems right now. Like we have a Bronco Pride time at the end of the day where that time can then be used. If we do have specific things that we want to ensure that students have mastered, let's say that, I know just to pick on Will, like Will's probably not going to be in this boat, but I have Will in class and I know that Will is really struggling in this particular standard. I don't know, Will could probably tell you way more about this standard.